Thank you, everyone, for coming. This is the, we're going to start the March 14th, 2023 zoning committee meeting. We're holding the hybrid public meeting, which enables for vote, electronic participation, as well as legally, and it is legally authorized by the Code of Virginia for the planning commission's electronic meeting policy adopted on July 7th, 2022. Members of ZOCO are participating both here in person and virtually through electronic means. At this time, I'd like to orient everyone to a hybrid environment, cover, cover a few specifics about how tonight's meeting is run. Members of the public may attend the meeting here in person or electronically by using the Microsoft Teams link provided in the ZOCO webpage, the county's event calendar, and the email notification sent to ZOCO email subscribers. Additionally, there is a dial-in phone option for those who wish to use it. For planning commissions joining virtually, that's where we look up and see if anyone is actually with us, doesn't look like it. Anyhow, I'll just read through. If anyone loses internet connectivity during today's meeting, please reconnect with us by phone. Please keep your phones and devices muted until you're called upon. Turn off sound to any other devices around you to minimize interference. For virtual attendees using Microsoft Teams, please turn off your video feed and keep your microphones muted as you enter the meeting and during the meeting. Microsoft Teams meeting chat will only be used to provide instructions for virtual attendees on how to register for public comments and to field general questions about Microsoft Teams. Teams chat will not otherwise be monitored by staff or the planning commission during the meeting nor will be used to collect feedback. All right. Unlike the planning commissions, regular meetings, the ZOCO agenda items are not public hearings, therefore, public comments are not mandatory. But if we have any public attending, we could, they can sign up to speak. Let's just give them two minutes at the end. So there will be public, a chance to speak publicly at the end. Public comments can be provided by people attending in person or virtually. For in-person attendees who wish to provide public comments this evening, you may indicate on the sign-in sheet that you would like to provide public comment. For virtual attendees who wish to provide public comment this evening, you may indicate in the Teams chat that you would like to provide public comments, and your name will be added to the list of speakers. As a reminder, you always have the option to provide written comments via the link that is provided in the Teams chat on the ZOCO website. All written comments, whether on paper or online, will be shared with the planning commission and posted to the ZOCO page for public viewing. All comments received as of today have already been shared with ZOCO. I will call speakers at the end of the meeting, and I will ask Mr. Rogers to let me know if we have virtual attendees who would like to provide comment. Mr. Rogers, both knowledge speakers in the Team Chat, please indicate in the chat that you'd like to provide comment, and your name will be added to our speakers list. Members of the public attending virtually will speak first, followed by person, in-person attendees. Virtual attendees who are called upon to speak must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that is located in the meeting command bar. Moderator does not have the ability to unmute you. Lastly, this is the public forum. Today's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website. All information associated with today's meeting, whether written or spoken, is the subject to freedom of information and requirements. All right, got that out of the way. I will hand it over to staff to start the meeting.
Mr. Carroll, just make one very quick announcement. Mr. Hogan had presented to ZOCO back in January, just with a very over summary briefing of some work that he's spearheading, or some of the feedback that he received at that meeting. He is preparing that first batch of text amendments, the errors only, the RTA should be on the board's agenda either for this Saturday's meeting or for the April meeting, and that's going to go straight to the planning commission, like, for that feedback. The subsequent batches, I know he'll continue to come amongst ourselves to try to figure out how best to integrate ZOCO, but the, the strong feedback that we've received was the errors, you know, let's not bother with ZOCO's time. So that's, that's how he's proceeding.
Agreed. That's good. Thank you. Perfect. I think with that, I'll turn things over to Ms. King to present our agenda items tonight.
My first day using Teams is... Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me here tonight to present on this iteration of the Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative. For those of you I haven't met, my name is Elizabeth King, and I'm a member of the Real Estate Development Group in Arlington Economic Development, and I'm joined here tonight by Jill Hunger, PhD. For tonight's presentation, we're going to start off with a refresher and update on the Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative. Then we're going to talk about fun and games, podcasting and influencers, and then the serious business of research and development. So let's get the ball rolling on the topic at hand, reviewing ordinance amendments to implement the county manager's strategy to ensure there is resiliency in our commercial market.
Thanks.
It would have ruined all my pictures. These ordinance amendments are part of the Quick Approach, which includes three to five months of zoning study, broader RTAs, targeted engagement, including online feedback forms, the required public hearings, and quick county board action. The county board authorized the RTA for indoor recreation on February 18th, and the RTA for research and development and audiovisual broadcast uses is anticipated for approval on March 18th. The Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative reflects the reality that rapid economic shifts have structurally altered the way that commercial office and real estate spaces and retail spaces will be utilized in the future, leading us to the zoning amendments we're reviewing tonight. This work is essential because for our county to remain vibrant, the zoning ordinance needs to reflect the changing economic environment. There's a need to reset traditional concepts of what occurs in commercial spaces with the understanding that most uses occurring inside commercial buildings have limited public impact. In order to be competitive, faster processes to amend the zoning ordinance are needed. This understanding has resulted in this streamlined Commercial Market Resiliency Ordinance Amendment process, or updating uses, where we are updating uses more quickly and adding them to the zoning ordinance. Before we get the ball rolling on the rest of the presentation, I want to spend a minute talking about new economy uses. With the decline of manufacturing employment in America, in the early 2000s, economic development strategies shifted toward human capital development and quality of life, quality of life enhancement, with a greater emphasis on tech, place, and arts and culture-driven strategies. There was this new understanding that through growing creative industries, municipalities could attract talent, spurring innovation and investment, and leading to a virtuous business talent place cycle. This is when the term "new economy uses" rose to prominence. New economy uses refer to uses that fit the modern economy and include medical, research and development, indoor recreation, microbreweries, wineries, and distilleries, broadcasting studios, alternative energy, catering, and artisan manufacturing and maker spaces. In my previous role at the Economic Development, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, my program had a whole best practice encouraging municipalities to incorporate these uses into their zoning ordinance. And I was really excited to take this job because Arlington, through its CMR work, is implementing this best practice. We've already adopted ordinances that facilitate micro fulfillment, urban colleges and universities, urban agriculture, and artisan beverage and workshops. Today should be another step forward for the new economy uses in Arlington with the proposed expansion of indoor recreation and audiovisual and broadcasting uses, and the introduction of research and development flex spaces. And in the near future, you'll be hearing about commercial shared and ghost kitchens and how the restaurant and food service is evolving. If all goes well, Arlington County will have the new economy uses best practice wrapped up for the end of the year. All right, now that we're all caught up on the Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative, let's talk about some specific challenges related to the Arlington County zoning. These challenges include the ordinance that is inflexible with limited and outdated uses and examples, an ordinance that is misaligned with zoning best practices, and use tables that are lazy and complex. This results in extensive time spent by, spent by staff, the planning commission, and the county board on things like use changes, which should be relatively simple and minor administrative issues, which in turn takes away from time that could otherwise be spent on making broader policy decisions. Additionally, the zoning ordinance in its current form has resulted in the denial of businesses with new and emerging concepts that want to call Arlington home. And last, but certainly not least, least, is that for small business owners, time is money, and to help them be successful, which helps Arlington be successful, we need to instill greater predictability in the process. Now that we've gotten through all of that background information, I'd like to tee up our first ordinance amendment, indoor recreation. The county board authorized the request to advertise at the February 18th meeting, and we are anticipating this amendment will go to the planning commission for its public hearing on April 10th, and to the county board on April 22nd. So you may be wondering what I mean by indoor recreation, and that would be a good question because the world of indoor recreation has been rapidly expanding and evolving. Indoor recreation is a broad term that is inclusive of video game arcades, axe-throwing, bocce ball, curling, escape rooms, feather bowling, indoor play areas, miniature golf courses, recreational crafting, tabletop games, virtual and augmented reality gaming, and more. On this slide, we see two examples of emerging indoor recreation spaces. The first is The Wing in Ivy City. This is the space where parents can come with their kids, and for a small fee, their kids can play on the facilities provided with the other children while the parents have a snack or the beverage. I came here on a rainy Sunday with a friend specifically to do research for this presentation, and I could tell that the parents really appreciated having the space for their kids to get the energy out. The second example is of the Mews, the Mews in Ballston Quarter, which could be considered recreational crafting. On this slide, we have some creative examples of indoor recreation from the DMV area and beyond. First, there's Spin, which is a ping pong bar in DC where you can secure a ping pong table for a few hours and order food and drinks while you play with friends. Next, we have The Plant House in Alexandria. This would be considered a recreational crafting space and plant store. People come in, pick out their plants, and build terrariums right the store, perfect for your next date night. And I'll let Nick answer any questions about that at the end of the presentation. That's his photo. Below that, we have Beat the Bomb in DC, located in Ivy City. Beat the Bomb is a new take on, on the escape room, where players stood up in protective gear and advanced through five high-tech game rooms. That fail the test gets sprayed with paint. The concept also includes an arcade lounge and adult beverages. Next, we have Throw Social, also in Ivy City. Throw Social offers axe-throwing, space for corporate events, and more. Our final examples come to you from my home state of Michigan. The first is a bowling warehouse located in Hamtramck. Bowling is a combination of football and bowling. It can be played one-on-one or in teams of two, and you take turns throwing footballs at bowling pins. This space is a great example of adaptive reuse. What was once an empty warehouse, bringing minimal revenue into the city, is now a vibrant place for people to gather, connect, and compete. If you want to try out bowling but don't want to travel all the way to Michigan, I believe you can find, find it at Throw Social in Ivy City. Our final example from Detroit is a feather bowling, a rather obscure sport where you roll wooden discs and try to land closer to the feather than your opponent. This space is attached to Cadet Cafe, where one can grab dinner or drinks. Feather bowling has recently been adopted by a brewery in Brooklyn. As you can see from this slide, there's a lot of creativity in the indoor recreation industry, and traditional descriptors might not cut it anywhere. From our example, in the previous slides, you might have picked up on some trends. We're seeing evolving restaurant concepts that blend high-quality food and beverage experiences with gaming. We're also seeing increased demand for recreation, indoor recreation facilities and walkable areas, along with emerging activities and technology. And finally, in this post-pandemic world, there is a greater need for places for people to engage in competitive socializing, where they can bond and connect over shared interests and activity. The video I'm about to show you is a great example of that. People who live in areas, urban areas such as this, don't have the space to host these activities at home, so they're seeking out those spaces in their neighborhoods. These amenities can also be part of the reason someone chooses to live, chooses to live where they choose. That was an example of an indoor recreation space and a restaurant bar concept called Hook Hall up in Parkview in DC, and they're hosting indoor pickleball leagues for BOLO. We don't want to listen to it again. Now that we've explored the wide world of indoor recreation, I'd like to turn our sights a little bit closer to home, to the Puttery, which is a modern restaurant concept owned by Drive Shack Inc., which fuses high-tech mini-golf with cocktails and cuisine, as well as gathering space for corporate and group events. Drive Shack Inc. is a growing, growing business, generating $16.7 million in Q3 of 2022, up 47% from 2021. The company has locations in DC, Miami, Chicago, Kansas City, New York City, Charlotte, Pittsburgh, Dallas, and Houston, and there are five additional venues committed and scheduled to open in 2023. The Puttery gets about 30% of its revenue from gameplay, and the other 62% comes from food and beverage sales, along with corporate events. You might be wondering why I'm talking about this or how it connects to this amendment. Let me explain. The Puttery was opening, interested in opening a location in Arlington, in Thurndon, and wanted to go into a portion of space that was previously used for Barnes &amp; Noble. The Puttery applied for zoning, zoning determination, but was denied. The location was zoned CO 1.5, and miniature golf courses were not allowed in that district under the current ordinance. As of now, we have missed this opportunity due to the construction and inflexible nature of our work. Before we get into our proposed ordinance amendments, I'd like to talk about something I alluded to earlier, zoning trends and best practices, and how they relate to Arlington County zoning ordinance. Talking through these will help us be on the same page as we look at the proposed changes in the coming slides. Believe it or not, there have been many advances in zoning in recent years, and there has been a shift in recommendations, from the old way of listing out individually permitted uses in each district to regulating uses via broad defined categories and only specifically prohibiting problematic uses. It is also now a best practice to consolidate similar uses since there are few meaningful distinctions between sub-use categories. These changes can help with predictability and transparency, simplifying overly complex tables. By making some straightforward changes, we can also help simplify the use change process, extending the useful life of existing buildings. Now that we've talked about some zoning best practices, let's take a look at our existing entertainment and indoor recreation use categories to see if you noticed any, any issues identified on the previous slide. You can see here that we still heavily rely on the traditional method of listing out each use, even if they are not problematic or distinct, rather than more broadly relying on our use category. You'll also see that even though many of these uses are similar, they are sometimes regulated very differently. Miniature golf courses, for example, are only currently allowed via use permit in the CTH, a district that makes up 0.049% of the land in Arlington and requires physical structures to look like townhouses. What I'm proposing here is that we remove most of these individual uses and their different regulations from the table and consolidate them. Here you'll see our current entertainment and recreation use category. Game arcades are being removed from entertainment, and some of the language under indoor recreation is slated for adjustment. We're also proposing a slight adjustment for consistency under the uses not included section. As I promised, I promised some consolidation, and here it is, in the proposed commercial mixed use table. As you can see, game arcades are no longer in the entertainment category. The word "commercial" has been added to swimming pools as part of cleanup to help with consistency since we have an existing definition for this use. Finally, you may notice that most of those previously listed out indoor recreation uses are no longer in this table. They have been consolidated and now fall under the broad indoor recre, all indoor recreation line item, which references us back to the broad use category. Under this proposal, we are now regulating similar uses in the same way, and we are permitting this use by right in the majority of commercial mixed use districts, providing predictability for future applicants. We're also allowing blended indoor recreation spaces to exist more easily. This slide contains the proposed amendments for the use categories. Game arcades has been moved from the entertainment into the recreation category under the term amusement and video game arcades. You'll also notice that the examples under indoor recreation have been expanded to be more inclusive of these modern indoor recreation examples we were talking about earlier. Tennis, handball, and racquetball has now become court game facilities, and skating rink has transformed into indoor skating facilities. The term "similar establishment" has been added to give the zoning staff greater flexibility as new indoor recreation uses continue to emerge. Arlington is not alone in making these zoning amendments. In fact, many of our neighbors have already broadly added the indoor recreation new economy use to their zoning ordinance. Fairfax County uses the term "commercial recreation indoors," which includes movie theaters, music venues, bowling alleys, indoor skating facilities, amusement arcades, indoor shooting and archery ranges, tennis and similar courts, recreational crafting activities, and similar establishments. Fairfax permits these uses by right in the C3 through C7, and also in many of the planned development districts. Prince George's County uses the term "recreational facility indoor" in their zoning ordinance, and the uses covered under that are very similar to those found in the Fairfax County ordinance. PG County also permits this use in most of their non-residential based zones and all transit, transit oriented and activity based zones. Alexandria uses the term "recreation and entertainment use indoor," which is inclusive of the previously mentioned uses. Alexandria permits these uses by right in their mixed use commercial office and industrial zone. From these examples, you can see that this work brings us more into alignment with our neighbors, making us a more competitive location for indoor recreation. In that same vein of indoor recreation and adaptive reuse of existing buildings, I'd like to talk about an indoor recreation facility that is anticipated to open in DC in early in 2023, Kraken Courts. Kraken Courts is brought to us by Anna Valera, a Hook Hall co-founder and Kraken Axe's owner. This space is a 70,000 square foot adaptive reuse of a former Foreman Mills building and will utilize the space until redevelopment of this area is completed. Kraken Courts will feature 16 pickleball courts, a roller rink, lounge seating, courtside cabanas, indoor lawn games, and a beer garden. This will be DC's first indoor roller skating rink, giving the area's robust roller skating community a place to gather. It should also help take some of the pressure off public outdoor tennis courts. With this zoning ordinance update, we hope for the following outcome. Making commercial spaces given new life. New and emerging spaces for corporate team building events, which can help with attracting workers back to the office, can be created. We may also see some relieved pressure on public outdoor recreation space and year-round activities for exercise and healthy living within walking distance. This amendment will also lower barriers to entry and provide greater opportunities for entrepreneurship. And last, but certainly not least, we may be able to keep more of these indoor recreation dollars in Arlington, rather than letting them flow across the river. Hopefully, in the future, we'll see more of these indoor recreation examples we've talked about today located in Arlington. That was all fun and games, but now it's time to shift our focus and talk about audiovisual production and broadcast studio uses. We are anticipating that the county board will authorize this RTA on March 18th, and public hearings will be held with the planning commission and county board on May 1st and 13th respectively. You may be wondering, what the heck is audiovisual, what the heck is an audiovisual production and broadcast studio? That would be a good question because it was not previously defined in the zoning ordinance. The proposed definition for audiovisual production and broadcast studios is as follows: A space dedicated to the recording or production of audio and/or visual media, or the broadcast of media via radio, television, or internet, or the combination of any of the above. The audiovisual production and broadcast studio use can include editing studios and services, special effects production, and associated offices. The photo in this slide comes again to us from Detroit. In 2017, Seven Action News opened up a studio space in the lobby of an office building downtown, adding visual interest to the space and generating additional revenue for the building. Thank you. Like we touched on earlier in this presentation, these ordinance amendments are needed in part due to changing markets, technology, and the changing way we use our buildings. Podcasting, an industry that barely existed 20 years ago and was much smaller during the county's previous ordinance reformatting, is currently a $2 billion industry, and PWC projects it will grow into a $4 billion industry by 2024. Digital radio and digital broadcasting has also been on the rise. What used to require large antennas and satellite dishes now only requires an internet connection. Audiovisual production and broadcast studios are now commonly found in office buildings, coworking spaces, hotels, and retail spaces. Another trend touched on earlier is urbanites turning to the market for external space for their hobbies. This persists when talking about audiovisual production and broadcast uses. Related to this is one of the most interesting things I've seen lately, influencer brooms and spaces. These are aesthetic spaces where one can go and take pictures and report content. The photo and video on this slide are of the Cassandra Smith Agency in Atlanta. This audiovisual studio offers 39 different exhibits for $150 an hour, and what I thought was really cool was that there are makeup and hair studio spaces. I can see this being useful if a small business owner didn't have space yet but wanted to take high-quality marketing. The book is, and I got to fly on a private jet. So zoning is not a one-size-fits-all approach, and municipalities often take a unique path to a same location. This same use goes by many different names, depending on where you're at. For example, in Detroit's ordinance, they're called recording studios. In DC, media studios. In Atlanta, office, arts and crafts galleries, and studios. In PG County, they go by the name art, photography, music, dance, yoga, or yoga Pilates, or martial arts studios, or schools. And in Cambridge and San Diego, they go by the more traditional and limiting term, radio or television studio. And the photos on this slide are just another example of how podcasting and digital radio spaces are popping up in hotels, and this is the Line Hotel in DC and the Eaton Hotel. With different names and different municipalities, come different use categories for the audiovisual and production broadcast use. Detroit houses this use in the office category. Detroit houses this use in the office category. PG County places it in the arts and artisanal products category. Cambridge in the transportation, communication, and utilities category. San Diego in commercial services, and it's uncategorized in Atlanta since they use a different ordinance format. No matter the category, AV broadcast uses are generally permitted by right in most of the aforementioned municipalities, commercial, and mixed-use districts. On this slide, you'll also see another example of an upscale hotel, the Foundation Hotel in Detroit, with co-located studio space.
Can I do a time check with you? Just make sure we're not going to run too long.
We are at 7:30, and we are more than halfway through.
Right.
And these ones are going to go quick.
Perfect.
Yeah, yeah, they're going to go quick. We're almost done.
That's what I want.
Yep. So you can see here that the commercial mixed-use table slides presented, if you look at the office category, we're adding the broadcast use to this, so we're really broadening this use, and we're also allowing this use across a majority of commercial mixed districts. On this slide, you'll see the proposed changes to the office use category. For consistency with the table, we're proposing to remove the words... proposing to remove the word... no, I don't know how to go back, whatever. We're proposing to remove the words "television" and "radio" and replace them with the more modern and inclusive "audiovisual production" and "broadcast" or "studio" terminology.
And "audiovisual production."
Yep, yep, yep. It used to be called TV and radio, and the use in the use category didn't actually match the use in the table, so this will be a little bit of cleanup here. With these proposed changes, we're really hoping to allow for the co-location of audiovisual production and broadcast. Broadcasts with other uses are in spaces that are currently vacant. It is our hope that this will be an attractive amenity wherever it's located and that buildings will be able to tap into additional revenue streams. By allowing these spaces more broadly in Arlington, we are again lowering the barriers to entry and opening up the possibility for visually interesting streetscapes, creating space for creativity and skill building, and facilitating in-person uses that bring people together in our commercial mixed-use districts. So for our final topic of the evening, let's explore research and development. The research and development RTA is anticipated for the county board approval on March 18, with planning commission and county board public hearings scheduled for May 1st and 13th respectively. If you've made it this far, you know what's coming next: the proposed definition for research and development flex, which is as follows: administrative offices plus research facilities generally engaged in technological, electronic, biological, scientific, or engineering research, as well as related product or process design, development, prototyping, or testing. This use may include laboratory, warehousing, and small-scale production functions, and may be associated with institutional or commercial uses, but may not include industrial-scale production or manufacturing. The flex denotes that these are not just purely R&amp;D spaces, but a combination of spaces required for modern research itself. When you close your eyes and imagine research and development space, you might imagine a suburban office building or industrial park. However, that is an image of the past. For many years, there's been a shift from suburban office parks and industrial parks to mixed-use urban environments closer to transportation, housing, and activities. Businesses are choosing to locate where talent wants to live, and talent wants to live where the stuff is and where they don't have to drive. In this area, we're also seeing the rapid expansion of technology and life science sectors and their desire for prime commercial real estate, which is facilitated by a highly educated workforce and industry and university clustering. These businesses are looking for flexible commercial space, which can include corporate headquarters, offices, as well as R&amp;D lab activities. In recent years, we've also seen a significant increase in federal research and development funding, which Arlington should be well-positioned to benefit from through this. Similarly, to podcasting, there's been an emergence of R&amp;D lab coworking spaces, which can lower the barriers to entry by providing high-tech equipment, allowing startups to locate near existing businesses. As I mentioned before, the way we use commercial office buildings is changing. The R&amp;D real estate supply has increased significantly since the beginning of 2022, primarily due to office-based conversion. This has been made possible through engineering, which helps facilitate retrofits instead of tear-down, allowing buildings to extend their useful life, which can help lower the environmental impact of constructions, construction, and bring buildings back to useful life more quickly. The photo on this slide is an example of R&amp;D coworking space called Flex Labs in San Francisco. Flex Labs offers the opportunity to work alongside many diverse startups with access to 6,000 square feet of amenities and 13,000 square feet of open workspace. As you can barely see from this floor plan, the majority of the space is taken up with desks and standard office amenities like meetings and game rooms. We've now come to my favorite part of the presentation, where I'm going to tell you the story of how municipal ordinances can work to facilitate economic development. There are three primary research and development hubs: Boston-Cambridge, San Francisco Bay Area, and San Francisco, and San Diego. I would like to focus on five municipalities. The first is Boston. In 1989, Boston introduced an ordinance for their South Station Economic Development Area in order to create a mixed-use district in which office, retail, hotel, research, and development, and biomedical uses were combined to foster economic growth and facilitate the expansion of those sectors downtown. The second is Cambridge, an Arlington Pierce City in the Chicago Fed's Resiliency category, which has an office and laboratory as a combined use category in their ordinance, and allows technical office for research and development and laboratory facilities in all of their office, business, and industrial districts. Our third example comes to us from San Francisco. In 2008, the laboratory use was added to the ordinance defined and allowed in the C3 district. In 2023, San Francisco has decided to copy Arlington. A project for flexibility, flexible zoning downtown was kicked off to further update the ordinance in order to allow underutilized buildings to house new uses, including research and design spaces, while speeding up the development process. In a similar vein, Berkeley spent part of 2022 updating their zoning ordinance related to research and development uses in order to add an updated definition of research and development, naming R&amp;D as an allowed land use in commercial districts, and updating district purposes to specifically embrace research and development. A major component of Berkeley's zoning ordinance update was to allow R&amp;D firms and office space so that Berkeley's existing businesses could stay or expand, and new businesses could open in the city, adding to the health of the cluster. Another driver of Berkeley's zoning ordinance update was to address time-consuming city processes, which included months or years to approvals. They recognized that these were jeopardizing business operations due to uncertainty and short investor timelines. Our final primary research and development hub example comes to us from San Diego. Research and development was added to the city's ordinance in 2000, and this was allowed in many of the commercial-based zones throughout the city. In 2019, San Diego updated their ordinance to create two new mixed-use zones with the goal to provide locations for compatible industries, high-quality employment opportunities, while adding to the tax base, reducing car dependency. The fact that all of these municipalities make up primary research and development hubs across the country demonstrates that these regulatory changes can have long-term positive impacts. Now let's take a look at some of our secondary research and development hubs. There are many municipalities competing for secondary research and development supremacy, but I'm going to focus on the work of Seattle, New York City, and the Washington DC Baltimore region. Seattle, another Pierce City, has clearly defined laboratory research and development uses, classifies them as commercial uses, and permits them in their commercial mixed-use districts. New York City, a municipality that is also facing a large commercial vacancy, is undertaking zoning work similar to Arlington. In mid-2022, Mayor Adams announced a zoning-for-economic-opportunity project with the goal of modernizing and simplifying zoning, removing restrictions, and making it easier for R&amp;D locations to expand and grow. NYC is betting big on the future of R&amp;D, and currently, the city allows these uses in manufacturing districts and some commercial zones through special use permits. They are aiming to expand the allowable districts and remove the special use permits. Now I'd like to talk about the R&amp;D cluster closer to home. In 2014, Montgomery County updated their zoning ordinance to include definitions of R&amp;D and life sciences. The county includes these uses in the office and professional use category and permits them by right in many of the commercial residential, employment, and industrial districts. In 2022, PG County completed and adopted their zoning ordinance overhaul, and PG's, PG County's ordinance includes research and development, which is clearly defined and places this in the industrial service use category. Even though this use is housed in the, in that use category, research and development is permitted by right in most non-single-family and transit-oriented activity-based zones. Our last two examples come from us to Fairfax County and Washington DC. In 2021, Fairfax County completed their zoning ordinance modernization project, and office was redefined to be inclusive of R&amp;D. This use is permitted by right in all commercial and industrial districts. Finally, DC also includes R&amp;D in their office use category, and this use is permitted by right wherever office is. It is clear that the competition is fierce even from our neighbors. Um, since this is such a big change, and the old vision of R&amp;D was more industrial and less high-tech, there may be some concerns that industrial manufacturing could move into Arlington's commercial district. It is my hope that this slide will help assuage some of those fears. There is a clear dichotomy between the space used for research and development and the space used for the manufacturing, manufacturing of goods, and it is essential to understand the difference between these two types of spaces. R&amp;D lab space buildings usually have a 60/40 split of lab and office. They require large floor plates, of which we have many, and ceiling heights of 13 to 15 feet, which is compatible with existing office. On the other hand, industrial manufacturing facilities are spaces dedicated to the manufacturing of goods. These buildings require complex planning and are not good candidates for office reuse since they require intensive HPA and power supplies. The build-outs are very expensive to each tenant's processes and the layout they require to manufacture goods. These buildings also require 22 to 25-foot building mirrors and grade-level doors. You can see from the examples on the screen that R&amp;D Flex Office Space looks like our traditional office buildings compared to the image on the right with high ceilings and a direct loading dock straight into the workspace. By virtue of the building requirements and the definition of research and development flex, any industrial-scale manufacturing that wanted to locate in Arlington would need to go into the industrial districts. And this slide should look familiar to you. It's just showing that research and development flex is being added as a permitted use by right across most commercial districts. This slide also just shows you that research and development flex is added to those examples under the office use category. To begin to close this presentation out, I'd like to discuss some of the potential outcomes we may see with this proposed zoning ordinance amendment. By allowing flexible research and development uses, we're allowing uses where in-person work is required. Hopefully, these uses bring people back into our business districts, creating positive knock-on effects for local businesses. The updates to this use will also put another business attraction tool in the business investment group's toolbox. It would provide businesses that are looking for more space the opportunity to expand in more districts, and would allow startups and entrepreneurs to locate near universities and industries. This streamlined process will provide certainty to potential applicants, allowing them to invest in Arlington at a quicker pace. And finally, once an office building is built out to suit R&amp;D needs, the space is almost universal with high reusability, making it a good investment at the long term. Finally, I'd like to close out this presentation with next steps. I will take the feedback provided tonight and integrate it into the zoning ordinance where possible. Public hearings are anticipated to be held for these zoning ordinance amendments as the dates outlined on the screen, and we will continue to provide information on these use changes on the zoning studies and commercial market resiliency pages of our website, where interested parties can provide feedback through the comment forum. Thank you so much for sitting through all those slides, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Nick. I think with that, is that the end of that presentation then? Thank you, Nick. All right. This is now with the Soco Committee. I will just open the floor for any questions and comments to raise.
One thing that we have a list of examples, really sure that doesn't end up inadvertently admitting, that it should be, and I know you have language at the end that gives flexibility, but I'd really like to see something, these are examples that are not meant to limit, are not limited, you know, something to that effect.
Including but not limited to.
Exactly, something like that. Really want to be careful if somebody in the future doesn't, well, it doesn't say this, so it doesn't count.
Can I follow up on this? So, um, oh, when we, when we're broadening the language so that we have a couple of big terms that are meant to encompass many different uses, are we then also having a place in the zoning ordinance where we're defining all of that?
Yes.
So that's, yeah, so that's what I was thinking too, yeah, including but not limited to.
Yep.
Yeah, right, so we can add to it and stay flexible. One of the things that we've come up with over the last few years, we feel like we're being asked to approve things that we should not have to, you know, that you should just be able to update periodically. That's a good point.
Yes, I try to keep the definitions very broad and adding some stuff.
We want to be broad, make it, shouldn't have to come back.
So things like indoor rec, and rec, they're all defined and.
Yep. So.
Indoor basketball.
Yeah.
Just listed, but that probably wouldn't be covered.
Court game facility.
Right.
That's our.
During the last time we discussed commercial resiliency, Commissioner Hughes brought up the general idea that like we should allow most things unless they have a detrimental impact on other people, and you should be responsible for the impact on other people. So is there any way to like include that sort of consideration that like, yeah, you can have all of these indoor basketball courts, but you need to do some really good soundproofing so that if there are residents, you know, in the build, in the floors above you, you know, they aren't hearing like slam, 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 slam all day?
Yeah, I believe that would probably be more under the building code and.
And the noise ordinance.
The noise ordinance, yeah, it would really behoove any property owner to make, you know, make the required upgrades to mitigate complaints. You don't want your upstairs tenants, whoever they may be, complaining and starting fights with your downstairs.
Some of those things end up being most responsible, or did to mediate to the tenants where they're going.
But Elizabeth, can you help us understand? Because I understand where we are now, we're wanting to try to be flexible and address this, but there was a reason that this was all parsed out at one point, you know, because these uses were somehow noxious to someone else, they were too noisy, or there was too much traffic, or they required parking in addition to the parking that was there. So how will we, and I think we're on the right track, but how do we move forward with that, knowing that those were some of the issues? Are they just, they're no, they're sort of moved now, the parking's more fashionable?
Can I just add, I'm not sure if you're familiar with like the pickleball fighting that is currently happening in Parks and Rec, and like it's Parks and Rec's job to mediate things, but we have neighbors that are like putting flyers in the mailboxes, like yelling at other of these people coming in, people coming in from across the river to use our pickleball courts, and it's a disaster, and so as much as there should be a mediator sometimes.
You've clearly thought about this, so help us think through this.
Okay, I'm going to do the first question. I'm going to. Let's tackle, tackle the panel. I'm going to. It's my hope that by allowing these uses indoor where people can go pay to do them or not pay to do them, or join a volo league where they can do them inside, that that will take some of the pressure off the outdoor parks and recreation.
Great point, that's a great point, that's a big issue.
Yeah. And so if they have other places to go do it, it won't take as much. as many resources from our parks and recreation that. So that, that's kind of the first idea and we're also helping fill some of this vacant retail space. Um, and again, adding vibrancy since the buildings, um, you know, since the uses are indoors. All that pickleball noise, the squeaking, whatever, the grunting, I don't know, I've never played pickleball, I'm just thinking about tennis.
So we can mitigate against the grunting and squeaking?
Well, hopefully it will be contained, just like any restaurant, the sound from indoors would be contained.
That's a good point, in a way that you might not be able to do it outdoors.
Exactly, so you're not going to be annoyed by the pickleball noise because it will have moved into a space where you only see it when you're walking by and you only hear it if you go in.
Honestly, I think some of these. Undeserved.
I know, I just want to make sure we've thought that through, that what were the reasons why we did it and have we covered that? So noise might be one, that's true, that's true.
I think game arcades was the nineteen eighties when kids were skipping school to go play video game arcades. And now it's actually, um, the barcade is a very common thing in Detroit. Probably like five different barcades that adults are going to and playing games. So, you know, these uses have really evolved from the time when it's kids skipping school to now it's it's adults going and using the puck ball courses.
Yeah, but let me finish on this thought because, did you get comments on any of this? I just want to make sure that we're thinking as broadly as possible so that there wasn't a reason with any of these that we need to be considering as we say, yeah, this, this makes sense virtually everywhere. It wasn't a parking issue, it's probably a separation of uses to undesirable people, there's definitely noise on them. Were there comments related to any of this? Okay.
No.
See, these are mostly indoor.
Yes.
All indoor, not talking about outdoor.
I know, what I'm asking Jim is at one point we said you had to do something special to get these. And what was the rationale for that? And how has that gone away?
Can I, maybe I'll, I'll paint this, create for that, if I can help this. So on the research and development use, right? A little bit of a joke, but not completely, we do have tenants like Lockheed Martin and Boeing. And they do research and development in missiles, right? How do we control, what is, where is the language that says we can't be testing lasers on, like, I mean, and I'm completely asking. Out of ignorance.
You test lasers to be indoors.
But I mean, how do we, how do we know we don't cause a nuclear explosion?
Yeah, yeah, like mixing chemicals.
Right.
That's the building code.
So.
And that's also the research and development, uh, buildings, uses laboratory spaces are already highly regulated. Um.
Regulatory protection.
Yeah, not just OSHA, but there's, um.
That's my question.
There are a lot of federal guidelines.
Like, for instance, are we? I understand, but like, is our zoning getting ahead in two, three of this and that's fine perhaps? Is our zoning sort of matching that at some level? I mean, and I think this is what we're getting to, like, yes, we're broadening, but there's still some guardrails on the side that maintain your level of safety and.
Zoning ordinance is the way to do that, I think those are valid concerns. But that's handled, it's a separate issue, it's an externality that it's a thing by that specific use. Mentioned there are all sorts of regulations, fire hazards, nuclear, nuclear, I mean hospitals have nuclear materials that they use in various procedures, it's a very tightly regulated, that you don't have, you don't have to put it in the zoning.
So that's when those zoning.
You don't put that, you don't put that on it.
Are, are the regulations assuming that you're going to be in a big industrial warehouse, like away from residential areas?
No, this.
They go to, they don't go, they don't go to where, they go to what it is. So it doesn't matter where you do it, you're still coming.
Our building code definitely, it, it, it talks to explosive or flammable materials. How they have to be stored in a court. So it goes through the laundry list of how it's stored, where it's stored, how much it can be.
So if there's multiple levels, change your building code, there's a federal regulation, it's a different type of substances.
Can I ask you my question? Thank you, um, so this is the idea that with some of these uses, they were called out specifically at one, at some point. And what, why were they called out that way and has that rationale gone away? But was it just capricious and was it just exclusive? Let me ask Elizabeth. Um, because I think she's done the work on it, this was a very detailed presentation. I just want to know how you've thought that through because those might be the sort of questions that we get asked in the public hearing or that percolate out of the community.
Yeah, those are good questions. Um. I was not here when Arlington created.
And your experience looking at the other jurisdictions where you did the research and showing how they've changed their language as well. Is it just that it's arcane the way our housing model is? Okay.
Yes, the, the uses have really evolved and the way we think about them, we don't think about um, miniature golf courses as something for kids anymore or pool halls as where bikers hang out.
Okay.
Um, and speaking of the billiards and pool halls ordinance. Um, this amendment is also a little bit of cleanup because when the, um, zoning ordinance reformating happened in like the mid two thousands. Um, some of the spaces where billiards and pool halls were allowed, didn't actually make it all the way on to the use table. So even the use table as it is today wasn't quite as restrictive as it was back in the day. But I think, um, I think the view and reputation of these uses has changed in recent years and.
Elizabeth, that's super humble, that's just what I was trying to get at, I haven't done a lot of research on this. This looks really progressive and I'm always excited when we do something like this, but that was my first thought, you know, was there something that we didn't consider as we made the changes?
And I think you're right, I think a lot of it is we were, we were a sub.
Yeah.
These things don't happen here because we're a suburb, we're a bedroom community, we don't have this sort of stuff. We don't have order, we don't want this. Because we're a bedroom community.
Just share a couple of observations that I'm having from a somewhat of a, a third-party perspective. I'm seeing two opportunities where, where we as staff collectively, I'm happy to help on this. Um, could help fill in some, you know, once, once you have that public hearing stat report in front of you. My hope is that you'll turn to the community engagement section and you'll see a synopsis of the, the commentary this evening. I'm seeing an, an opportunity to further inform on two fronts. Uh, number one, um, in this, this could be intensely glorious exercise and but it's worth kind of looking back through some of the older zoning ordinances and perhaps we can find a couple of examples or things to demonstrate. Okay, what did the zoning ordinance say in nineteen fifty, in nineteen sixty-five, did some of, how was it characterized? How did that change in the twenty twelve to twenty fifteen so we could? I would contend that Elizabeth's analysis of other jurisdictions and things is, is quite comprehensive. Perhaps we can fill in some of the gaps on our own narrative of how we, how we got to this, I think that's what I was.
Yeah, um, given the conversations that we've had recently about big changes in the community. I want to be able to put our fellow residents at ease that this isn't as dramatic as it sounds.
Yeah.
Where this is right in line with where we are today.
And I agree, and I think, I'd have to interrupt that, it'd be too.
I know, you know a lot too.
When you were right with your, your camera, my profession is radio broadcasting, it's like, why was that tight plan and special?
Yeah.
Antennas, satellite dishes.
Right.
Yeah, we might not, we might just announce, but we can, perhaps there's something in the archives.
Studios themselves, because they have coax cables taken out, so you can have the, the antenna in different jurisdictions. But we have had podcast studios here for decades, doing BTAs here forever, Channel Seven's here forever. Yeah, and who cares if it's, why should we say anything about those? And two, a question about podcasts, because podcasts, people do them in their home, they do them walking around. So we're really, that doesn't affect people who do podcasts money just in their own home.
No, it's just giving them, they're just popping up as additional spaces.
That's fine, which is all the more reason why it should be allowed by right, because everybody's doing it anyway. Wherever they are, you know, it's something that doesn't have to be in that spot, so why would you regulate? Um, so you know, absolutely that type of substance.
So considering people are currently doing it in their homes and probably aren't recording it as like taxable income. But now they're using these like official business spaces, it does, is there like an extra layer that Arlington? You know, tax assessor can come in and say, give me all your records, now let me cross, see who lives in Arlington.
I guess it would depend on if they have some sort of official business or paycheck, right? Some people just podcast as a hobby, I have a friend that has like a movie podcast or something obscure like that, so. Um, you know, if it's like a big studio, trying to think of, I listen to a lot of Freakonomics, I can't remember.
That's a big brand, yeah.
Yeah, I can't remember who produces them, but that is a use that would not necessarily be in like a co-located. Oh, we're putting it with the hotel, but that's probably a use, well, they actually talked about it, they don't go really into their office anymore, but they do have office and studio spaces. So that's, you know, more of a formalized business that would be, you know, have a business license, need formalized space. Um, rather than somebody hobby podcast.
I do have led into something that's concerning, that's concerning me. To the good line of inquiry, because I'm wondering to our residential, so we have people who lots of, lots of capacities that go into Evercom to them. And we do have rules about what people do in their homes, make money. And I'm wondering how outdated those are, whether we now have given type of demographics that we.
I was gonna say, we're entering a little out of.
I have been that, I have a personal.
That's a good point. Um, sir, let me let Mr. McCully speak.
Yes, thank you, just to clarify, if you occupy a commercial space and you need your certificate of occupancy. Uh, if you're a business, you need to also get a B-Pole license, so. As a former business entering a commercial space, that's the, that's the way that we collect taxes on our businesses. This does not preclude home occupation, but I will say home occupation, given what the pandemic has done to how people work, is something the manager has talked to us about as part of this process. Probably a longer-term study, but thinking about how we, we think about how people work from their homes.
Thank you, Mr. McCully, I'm gonna.
Yeah, well, I have to follow on to your question just about like regulating the safety. And I understand there are organizations that are in charge of doing those regulations. And yet we've recently learned that a new president can come in and gut all of those regulations. And the examples of all the other R and D hubs that you included are all in like very new nanny states, if you will. Um, that probably might have like state-level regulations that can keep people safe, whereas Virginia may not have those and Arlington doesn't have the authority to include extra, you know, safety standards. So I was just kind of interested in asking more about the research and development.
Can I take it back on that? So I, I agree, there's the building code, there's the fire marshal, but they still are essentially mitigating what's already been allowed, right? Zoning is what keeps it out. So zoning, for better or for worse, right, hopefully better, we're saying now you can bring that in here, right? And the building code and the fire marshal are going to say how to do that safely, right? But we're still allowing something new when, and so I'm wondering if there's you know, some unintended consequences and hopefully I'll speak to the same point that you are.
So there are, you know, other municipalities sometimes include use standards. Uh, such as, you know, um, performance standards that regulate uh, uh, noise, odor, fumes, vibrations, dust, light pollution, hours of operation and disposal and storage or flammable or combustible, chemical or hazardous substances. So some use, you know, use standards exist, it's not unheard of. It really is just a question of if we think the, um, it's too late. Um, it really is just a question of if we think that is the work of our zoning ordinance and zoning administrators to, um, to regulate in that way. I'm not sure if they're experts in research and development, so it's, it's a question of we can, we can put those in. Um, but does it put them in a, you know, difficult position? Are they, are the use standards enforceable? Um, how does one measure vibration? When you, um, convert an office to research and development or you build a from-scratch research and development building, they actually need to have very high, um, they don't want vibration, so they really need, um, buildings that are built so to minimize vibration. So they're already, um, building those things and thinking about them when they're transitioning or constructing the building. Um, the labs also, uh, take very, there's for R and D space and lab space. There are a lot of really strict standards around ventilation and, and approvals for that sort of thing. So I think we could put some guardrails on there, um. It could be, uh.
I think, I think we don't have to, I think, I, we don't need to put you on the spot.
No, it's okay.
To answer right now, I think it's just something that perhaps we could look at, favorite jurisdictions, some jurisdictions that you have that have similar sort of intent, and we're very supportive of this. Care about that, but I think, um, we have to be careful about opening the barn door, right, what might come in and what might go out insofar as.
Yeah, definitely look, because I think you're right. All our large cities, research universities, which are most of our ones, have these type of facilities in them. Persons, they are very, exist, they're very, very dense areas, Columbia, Park has them, Philly, and Philly has them. Or something, Boston area, John Follin there, um, those are very, very dense, you know.
Yeah, there's some great ways to do it.
I'm just.
It's dual.
Thinking that those states may be inclined to ensure that safety regulations are in place in a way that Virginia isn't.
I agree with Charlie, I, I'm a little, I'd be concerned about the churn, I'm wondering if we have any other advisory groups that might be interested in helping ensure that.
But UT has, Texas is not, it's, it's a red state.
I think.
They're very loose, but UT has the same type of, right, central Austin.
Might benefit from having an internal conversation with our official and just saying, I, I, I don't think that our building codes are to the whim of, of our governor or our election officials as quickly, but, but I would like to confirm that. Um, because that does guide a lot of this conversation that we're having right now is what sits in our building.
If, if, I can just add one other thing to answer what Bill was talking about, I mentioned sort of an opportunity to layer into the historical narrative, to address some of Fisher's hearings, comments, I think there's also an opportunity. Um, some of the, the broader, the broader regulatory environment, I'm prepared for that, Peterson. There seems to be an opportunity to outline some of this in stat reports, let us, let us work as a team collectively to say, okay, R and D, what are some of the, and again, this could, we could go really deep on this, but three hundred pages.